Good evening. I'd like to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. November 16th, 2021 meeting to order. And I ask Commissioner Skinner if he'll open this with an invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this. Blessings. Father, help us to remember. Coaches. Father, we ask that you be here. Supporting lead. Right decision. Right decision. Are these things?
Amen. Please stand for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, peaceful, liberty and justice.
All. Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have previous minutes in your package from the November 2nd Board of Commissioners meeting, the 7th and November 7th planning advance, and the 7th planning advances in session. If they agree with the minutes, I'll accept a motion to approve all as one vote.
Motion to accept all three as printed.
Second. Questions? On the favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. As far as the agenda, I guess there are three things we're switching, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for your approval tonight, we have moving item H1A, which is in agreement with Ingle Entertainment from the consent agenda to the debate agenda that was requested by Commissioner Malir. And then to add two items, those items would be I-3A1, be Lamig Striping and Signage Project, and then item I-3B1, which is an amendment for the ambulance service for the county.
Just want to welcome everyone here and let you know that we meet like the first and third Tuesdays. We'd love to have you back more often, so. Of course, there are a couple of folks who have requested to speak tonight. I'm going to move those items to when we get to that item on the agenda. So that way we can deal with it all at once. I believe we have a declaration.
Russell here. There we go.
Declaration to honor Small Business Saturday in Columbia County.
Russell LaHodna, he's the executive director of our Columbia County Chamber. And we are doing a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. So bear with me as I read this for you. I will make it quick, but I think it's very interesting, some of the statistics you'll hear in here. Whereas Columbia County, Georgia celebrates our local small businesses and the contribution they make to our local economy and community. Whereas, local retail sales exceed $1.6 billion annually. Whereas, 90% of business establishments in Columbia County employ less than 50 employees. And whereas, Columbia County is home to more than 4,800 registered businesses, many of which employ less than five employees. Whereas, small businesses employ over 55% of the working population of the United States. And whereas, the Columbia County Chamber of Commerce represents nearly 1,000 members and is a member-driven, business-focused for those businesses. Whereas Columbia County Board of Commissioners, along with the Columbia County Chamber of Commerce, support our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our quality of life. Now therefore, I'm out. I tried to do it all in one breath. Therefore, the Columbia County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 27th, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving, Small Business Saturday in Columbia County, and encourage all citizens to support small businesses and merchants during Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed and sealed the 16th day of November by the Board of Commissioners. Russell, would you like to say a quick word?
First of all, to the commission, we thank you for this proclamation. For those of you that aren't familiar with some of the statistics, when you spend $100 with a local business, 48 of those dollars typically stay within the community. When you shop at different, larger box office locations, it's usually more like $14. So you can kind of see the importance of shopping local. And not only that, look around the room. You support your friends, your family, and your neighbors when you shop local. So we just want to remind you of that coming into the holiday season. And I know with COVID, even your local businesses have upgraded their services. And a lot of them, if you're not interested in shopping within the stores, offer shopping online. So just, we want you to remember the businesses here that are in your backyard, that are, again, your neighbors, your friends, your employees. That's right. And supporting the jobs here locally. So again, we thank the commission for this proclamation and for supporting our local businesses.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. One of these items has been through the necessary committee. There are necessary votes to be placed on this agenda. So if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept one motion to do so.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? On the favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. On to the debate. Vice Chairman Richardson, I believe you have the first item.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of Resolutions 21-40 and 21-41 to establish streetlight districts in Oldman, Longford, and Wicklow at Canterbury Farms and Whispering Fines, Section 4A, and authorize Georgia Power to proceed installation per their proposal.
Second.
This is a request from the developer to establish these streetlights in these neighborhoods. They have, the developer has contributed money as you see here on your list. Have a season. Staff is recommending approval.
Questions? On the favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I believe you have the next one.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of a RC track slope mower from Jet Vac Equipment Company, LLC, roads and bridges, and amount of $61,000. Contract number 2342720601081.
Second.
Tabled.
It was, yes, sir. This is tabled. Commissioner Richardson asked, Vice Chair Richardson asked us to look at the possibility of acquiring a different piece of equipment and saving some money. We did compare these two pieces of equipment. The one that we thought could have saved some money didn't quite do the same things this one does. This mower is going to be used to finish mowing on some steep slopes where we're currently having to put, been with weed eaters. This will save us a lot of time. Our man hours will go down. This will actually be a cost-saving tool for us. So we're recommending going with the one we originally presented to commission.
Commissioner Richardson, are you satisfied with the answer you gave?
Questions? On the favor, raise your right hand. Carries. I guess it's time to vote on the proclamation we just gave.
Thank you. I make a motion to proclaim November 27th the Small Business Saturday in Columbia County. Please vote yes, because I already told them.
Wait. Questions? On the favor, raise your right hand. I think you can leave, Mr. Pardini.
Thank you.
Allen. Next item, Mr. Malir, the agreement with Ingle Entertainment.
I have the one next. Jane J. I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 21-44.
Second.
Todd. Chris.
Anson Settlement Participation for opioid lawsuit.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Sorry, we need to wake up our lawyer.
That's right. My aunt and uncle here for the first.
Oh, good. I was able to call you out.
That's right. So this is a settlement with one of the opioid defendants recommended by our counsel that we hired in Athens to do the lawsuit. I recommend taking their advice and agreeing to the settlement.
The bottom line is all of this opioid deaths and the big settlement cases, the, I guess, the counties and cities and across the country have hauled in to get some of the money that's going to be given out. So that's what this is all about.
This has to do a lot with state getting money, how it, you know, diverts the money, what it keeps, what it diverts to the counties, and how that works out.
Questions?
Population or how, number of people that are.
They have a formula that.
Information.
It's about like, it's about like the sales tax.
Okay. Great. Any questions? On the favor, raise your right hand. Carries now.
Now, I make a motion to postpone the agreement with Ingle Entertainment until the December 7th meeting, please.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, this is, or, this is an agreement that we were looking at with Ingle Entertainment to do some filming here in Columbia County. We're still working on that contract. The county attorney has been working on it with their attorney. We have not been able to come to terms so far. So we're asking to postpone this, and we'll report back whether or not we were able to come to terms.
Questions? On the favor, raise your right hand. Mr. Skinner, on to you.
Yes, sir. Item 12B1, request for a fee waiver. I make a motion to deny request for a fee waiver for application, BA 211006.
Second.
Last week, you granted a variance to a small lot of, small piece of property to allow a existing building to remain where it is inside of a setback. That was created because the county bought land from this parcel to create a new road onto the Vista Drive. Property was purchased by the current owner. The current owner paid the variance fee for the variance, and they are now asking to have their money returned to them, even though we went through the process of advertising. We did post a sign. Staff had to go through the same process. But they feel that since the county created the hardship, we should not charge them for going through the variance process. However, this person bought the land as it sits. We did not create the hardship for this person. This person acquired a hardship through somebody else.
And we did expend the funds to.
Advertising.
Advertising, everything we had to do.
And the motion was to approve or deny the.
Deny.
Deny the waiver.
Questions? On the favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Okay, item 12B1. Nope. B2, I'm sorry. I just said that. Item 12B2, which is File RZ 211101. I make a motion to approve the request for a major revision to the current S1 zoning for the property located at Tax Map 068, Parcel 013, subject to the condition enumerated in the November 4, 2021 Planning Commission Report with the addition of left or right turn lane shall be installed by the applicant prior to issuing the certificate of occupancy for any new buildings on this property. Site will be designed and operated to ensure the traffic on South Old Bel Air Road is not impeded by traffic accessing the property. As stated in the project access improvement manual, other existing development driveway streets that fall within the construction limit of the left turn lane shall be taken in consideration during the design of the new left and right turn lanes.
My second.
We have here is an existing school has S1 zoning. They're looking to expand their campus. This, this school has been there, operating under this name for a couple of years now, since 2010, I believe it is. This has been zoned for school property. Prior to that, it was zoned for church property. They are asking to add a building here, as well as a building here. The planning condition mentioned was requiring some additional buffer between buildings and the existing neighborhood. The additional conditions that were put on are requiring the left turn lane to be added to South Old Bel Air Road, as well as right turn lanes. This road, I forget the name of it, Merle Lake Court, ties in very close to this driveway. When they do this left turn lane design, they're going to make sure they have to consider that existing driveway in that location. So when they do their design, they will have to make sure we're not messing up access to this neighborhood. And the third part was making sure that traffic is not impeded on South Old Bel Air Road by folks dropping their children off in the morning or picking up in the afternoon. We want them to maintain all their stacking on their site so it's not stacked in our right of way and therefore impede traffic.
Have we heard from anyone?
I believe the HOA has talked to Planning Scott. I'll let Scott tell you what they've said.
We received a number of inquiries, but staff has walked the property with members of the HOA to address the planning condition that was placed on the property and as part of this application. So for the most part, they have been understanding and work with both the school and staff to come to this conclusion.
I wonder, is there, are there any neighbors here tonight?
Yeah, Mr. Schlockter, when, when we come after a project like this, it's a church, it has been a church, and has had limited use. Now with an increased use, what is the average cost of an intersection that we then have to improve, improve on as the conditions?
So to add the turn lanes along South Old Bel Air Road, to give you an idea, probably $200,000 to $300,000 to put turn lanes in. And that depends on a lot of things. What the right of way looks like? Is it steep slopes? Is it gradual slopes? Are there existing pipes in place? Do you have to move utilities? There's a lot that goes into it. So to be to tell you what this one's going to cost off the top of my head, I can't do that. I can tell you $200,000 to $300,000 would be a good guess what it's going to take to put these turn lanes in.
No bus.
No bus service that I'm aware of. Right.
It's all parents dropping the kids off.
That's my understanding. The, we looked at the ITE, which is Institute of Transportation Engineers. We looked at the trip generation model four private schools. It's two and a half trips per day, per student. They, in their narrative, they say they're going to have 200 students max. So 200 times 2.5 is 500 trips per day. So a trip is when you cross the line is the best way to describe it. So every time a car crosses that property line, it's a trip. So going in is one trip, going out is a trip. So take your 500 divided by two. You've got 250 cars going into this site every day. Divide that 250 by two, because you have a northbound access and a southbound access. So you've got some folks that are going to be coming and making a left, and some folks are going to be coming and making a right. So you've got about 125 people making a left, 125 people making a right. Now, that number might skew. It might be a 60-40 split. But if you do a 50-50 split, it kind of gives you your worst-case scenario of which way it's going. So we're guessing 125 turns, leftbound turns a day. I'm sorry, left, left-hand turns.
They're adding 13,000 square feet.
I believe that's correct, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Motion, second. Favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Item 12B3, I make a motion to approve the request for a conditional use for massage for Tax Map 073G, Parcel 084, subject to the condition enumerated in the November 4, 2021 Planning Commission Report.
Second. Questions? Mr. Allen? Questions?
I see you back there in the back.
hiding in the back. All right. On the favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
12B4, File RZ 211103. I make a motion to disapprove the request for a rezoning from RA to C2 for property located at Tax Map 028, Parcel 039.
My second.
This request to rezone from R2, I mean, it's RA to C2, the intended use would be to put a hotel and a gas station on this. Staff recommended to Planning Commission deny. Planning Commission voted to deny this request also. There's a recommendation to staff.
Motion on the floor is to deny. Is there somebody want to speak? Bear with me. Laurie Jordan. Folks want to talk, we'll go in order.
Missioners, for letting me speak tonight to you. I represent many of the views of my fellow Appling citizens when I tell you that we are opposed to a plan for a hotel. The proposed hotel, fuel, convenience, convenience store are unnecessary considering we have Circle K and the new Dollar General right next door. The proposed rezoning conflicts with the county's own long-range development plan, Vision 2035, maintaining the Appling Harlem Road as a rural corridor, taking family homes, agricultural use, open space, civic use. While we recognize that sometimes long-range plans have to change because no one knows the future when it is created, the spirit of the plan, however, was to preserve the rural character of this corridor while maintaining traffic flow and safety. What is the justification in having a long-range plan if you deviate from it? The current property owners purchased the property zoned agriculture residential, and they have every right to sell their land zoned as it is in that location. The land is still desirable as zoned. I believe work on the long-range plan began in 2015 and was only approved this year. Amazon isn't a surprise development to those who enacted this plan. Despite Amazon's presence in the area, in the industrial park, the vision was still enacted and launched as a rural corridor. I believe, we believe, the citizens of Appling believe that any services needed to support Amazon should be housed in the industrial park or near I-20 as well so that other established existing hotels and gas stations benefit from Amazon's presence. I applaud the decision for a long-range vision to be a rural corridor because it is wise and forward-looking, reflects the shift in our society to embrace preserving our green space over commercialization. Rural space is valuable, and it appears will be more valuable in the future. People are more focused on green initiatives, their health, the foods they eat. These all require rural land. Saying truth to the spirit of our long-range plan of being rural protects Appling's future and is what the citizens and businesses want to fulfill their vision. As far as hotels, motels, there are many. Some very recently built and remodeled off Bel Air, Wheeler Road, Grove Town, and Thompson Exits, which I am sure are not at full capacity. Does the applicant showing any proof that existing hotels are at a maximum capacity? Has a study been done to determine if more hotels and lodging are needed in this area? Lodgers staying at the hotel in the proposed location would still have to go to Grove Town or elsewhere for meals, which does not make a lot of sense to me. Building this hotel is the first step to opening the floodgates of Appling Harlem Road, turning it into another busy corridor. While, will the future of this corridor resemble Lewiston Road? Many Harlem citizens has also have concerns and are paying attention to this corridor. The citizens of Appling are hopeful that you will give these matters considerable thought in your deliberation. It is the opinion of the Appling citizens that support me tonight, and many who have emailed this commission, that District 4 is the county's authentic rural green space, a valuable county asset that attracts many who desire to live in such a setting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jordan, do you want to speak? Oh, excuse me.
Ms. Jordan.
I bet. Ms. Kane. I will, the, the motion was to deny the hotel, motel, so.
My name's Kim Kane, and I'm Grove Town resident, but I live close to exit 183 in Appling. And I'm here protesting for the motel and the truck stop gas station that it will open a corridor for sex trafficking for areas to be hidden. They, in the sex trafficking world, there is common to pick bedroom communities, small communities that are off of a major interstate because they can be under the radar. And so I would like to read an excerpt from our county website. I want to commend y'all for being proactive in our county for creating a safe community and aware of the severity and how common sex trafficking is and creating that safe environment. But on our website, our county website, with the National Human Trafficking Website, it says this. Hotels and motels are frequently utilized by traffickers facilitate forced commercial sex or forced work. In many cases, hotel and motel owners may not even be aware of how their businesses are being used to perpetuate these crimes. And in the sex trafficking world, smaller motels are a hotbed for their, for their business. So I'd just like to add that as a very, you know. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Kane.
And I will say, one of the greatest challenges we face as a commission is zoning and then protecting people's private property rights. And their challenge is, I don't have rights over your property, and you don't have rights over my property. And so we struggle with that when we work through situations like this. It's, how do you protect, how do you, how do you draw balance? Because a lot of folks can be against something, but people have a constitutional right. And so it's a balance, and it's something that we debate amongst ourselves greatly. So we don't take these decisions lightly, but we also respect the Constitution and want to follow it every week.
I want to thank all my constituents for sending me that volume of mail. I'm sorry I couldn't answer all of it. And I furthermore want to compliment you on coming to watch this instead of the guitar pool tonight. That's probably a good choice.
Is there a motion on the floor? Any other questions?
Can Matt go over the, just, like, what we're, what we're actually voting on? We're not voting on.
I voted on.
The hotel. That is not the question.
Please, will you flip through to the aerial view? One more. There you go. So the parcel in red here is the parcel you're considering is currently zoned RA, and they're asking to go to C2. And in C2 zoning, they can build gas stations, hotels, motels. They're asking for the C2 zoning.
Right.
For that one piece.
Is something else already zoned C2 in here, though?
There are. North of there is C2 zoning.
I'm sorry?
There you go.
There it is.
C2 zoning to the north.
The two small ones just above that.
Correct. Yep. And then the Dollar General, the gas station, the post office north of Columbia Road. One thing that was mentioned is our growth management plan. And it does have the parcel in red outside of the area that says C2, which is why staff recommended denial because it does not follow our growth management plan.
Several of these zonings are old that are near this intersection. And if you, if you zoom out, you can see that there are several commercial zonings surrounded by red RA zonings.
Right.
As well. So they still have that RA zoning.
Keep going back to it with those two, those two little parcels to the north.
Correct.
Of what we're talking about. We're talking about the one in bright red, the two pink ones. Those are already C2.
They're already zoned C2. We're strictly talking about the one in red.
And if somebody wanted to put a hotel on those two, they would do so without us.
They could.
Voting on it.
Currently have the zoning. They could do that.
So we are not voting on whether somebody can put a hotel on those other two. We are only talking about changing that house in this square.
That is correct.
That is correct. Okay.
You're voting on one piece of property only. You're not voting on just a hotel. You're voting on whether they have a C2 zoning, which includes a lot of things. Hotel is one of them.
Year.
I want to say it was in the 80s when that was done. Is that right? I think the 80s is when the C2 zoning was given for those other properties.
Any other questions? Is a motion on the floor? Second, on the favor, raise your right hand. Motion was to deny.
Item 12B5, File RZ 211104. I make a motion to allow the requester to withdraw RZ 211104 without prejudice.
Second.
Matt, will you explain what that means?
I will. So the applicant provided an application asking to change from R2 and planned unit development zoning to a planned residential development zoning. They are now asking that you allow them to withdraw that application without prejudice. Basically, our code says that once the public hearing has been advertised, applicant cannot withdraw on their own. withdraw on their own. They have to bring it to the commission and you have to allow them to take their application back. So that's their ask is to, then they were never here, let them walk away, all the zoning stays just like it is, nothing changes. The without prejudice part allows them to come back tomorrow if they want to and apply for something new. If you give it, if you do with prejudice, they have six months, they cannot apply for any new rezoning. It must stay as it is for six months.
And so basically, they're walking away from their current plan.
Correct. But again, tomorrow they could have come back in with a new plan, ask for R2 zoning.
Or do they start all over again?
They start all over. Another public hearing, another sign goes out of the land, another planning commission meeting, another board of commissioner meeting.
Right. Yeah, the way, yeah, what I have is in order of who requested, so I'd have to... Sure, I'm just trying, who's neighborhood and who's not? And it was, come on up, sir, and state your name and address for the record, please, and I'll figure out which one you are.
My name is Dee Costello. I'm the president of Idlwell Homeowners Association. I live at 268 Bowler Drive. I was at the planning hearing a couple of weeks ago. I'm familiar with the development like they proposed. My son lives in one, like hotcakes, but traffic is great. At any one given time there, you will see cars parked in the grass because the houses are so close, parking. This development had backside egress to it. Most of the times, those are not full-size streets, they're a lane, very small amount of parking there. They also proposed that the property was flat. It's not. If you go to where the lake is in Idlwell, you walk to the west side, you go down a slope, probably 30 feet down the hill to where the creek drains across that property. It goes on and winds through there. They said that it was flat. They have extensive grading to do that, which wasn't in their plan. They did not meet the requirements for access to that property. They only had one entrance. Code requires that there be two. I lived in Canterbury Farms. I'm still wondering why there was only one entrance to that place. That's why I moved. Wetlands area, that creek goes through there, there's a pond on that property that's back there. Drains a lot of water and that whole system goes across Washington Road. What would happen with that? That was the questions that wasn't answered for us. And then the last thing that we see is they were proposing 107 houses, take two cars per house, that's over 200 cars per day going out on Owens Road. Traffic is on that road since you all had it paved. That's a nice little shortcut, 200 cars, it's a minimum about that would be going out there, probably more than that. Had so much traffic in that area that it would just make it really, really dangerous. A lot of kids would be in that price range house and stuff, so.
Actually, I think it was 175 houses, wasn't it?
Well.
107, it was.
175, so it's even more, 250 cars at least. That was our concerns in the neighborhood. And Idlwell is the unique neighborhood that I have been there just for, not four years there. With the size of the lots, the size of the houses, just didn't match up with that, being so close to it. That's what our neighborhood would like to... Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jacob Elliott and I've had the opportunity to serve the residents of Brandon Wild for about three years now as the executive director. First, I would like to thank you all for everything you do for our community. I know you handle a lot of complex and sensitive issues such as this one. And I know that it can tend to be a thankless job. So thank you for all you do. I would also like to thank Robert Hegler. He's not with us tonight, but he's representing us on behalf of the Fulcher Hegler Law Firm. And finally, I'd love to thank our amazing residents who are here tonight, who are very supportive of this cause as well. Can I get a show of hands of Brandon Wild residents? Thank you all for being here tonight. While I'm very supportive of Columbia County's growth, I would ask that you strongly consider the negative implications associated with the approval of this high-density residential development in this particular location. I know the motion is to withdraw, but for future proposals, we understand that this land will eventually be developed and we do foresee negative implications associated with such a high-density residential area. So rather than continuing to ramble on about those specifics, I believe it'd be more meaningful for you to hear it from our very own residents. We've got a few that would like to speak and I think that they will adequately represent the feelings of our 370-plus residents that we have at Brandon Wild. Thank you.
Mr. Spears, you go in next. Lynn Mays.
Well, Mr. Jerry.
Jerry Whitworth. Okay. You are actually fifth, we're letting you go next.
I appreciate that very much. My name is Jerry Whitworth and I do live in the Preserve cottages at Brandon Wild, across the street from where this development is going to take place. And I'm speaking for me, the residents, and my husband, which is usual. In 2012, Charles and I began.
This is being recorded, just in case you take it away.
And he's here. In 2012, Charles and I began looking for our final resting place. And I'm not talking cemetery. I'm talking our final earthly home and retirement home. And at Brandon Wild, we found the perfect place. It was beautiful. It's located in a secure, serene, and quiet neighborhood, and it's buffered with a lot of green space. And when I say green space, I don't mean a strip of grass and a few shrubs. I'm talking lush forests, tall trees, long-lived undergrowth and everything. And let's also put buffers into perspective. A 50-foot buffer is 17 yards. Herschel Walker can run 17 yards in two seconds. Peyton Manning can throw a football that far with just a flick of his wrist. That is woefully deficient for any development next to a nice neighborhood. It seems that the growth and development, we've been here since 1974, and it seems to go in 10-year increments. You move, you want to be out in the country, so you go to Martinez. You want to be out in the country, so you go to Evans. You want to be out in the country. Every 10 years, you know, you kind of move because you still want to be in a forested area. Well, next year is our 10th year at Brandon Wild. We have nowhere else to go except heaven.
Big buffer there, by the way.
No, we're looking forward to it, but we don't want... I'm looking forward to heaven, but in the meantime, I don't want to be at hell on earth either. When we bought in Brandon Wild in 2012, University Hospital, of course, had it, and they gave us a tour of the beautiful campus and it was lovely. And so when we picked out our cottage and I asked them, I said, "What's that land over there?" And they said, "Well, we own it and we're going to use it for future development. And whatever we build there, we can assure you it'll be just as pretty as the rest of our campus." Well, University Hospital, they did create, they nurtured that campus, and they even bragged about in their marketing, 112 acres with lush walking trails, certified wildlife habitat. Well, our campus was, and it still is, a big draw for new residents. And you know, we have a lot of ebb and flow in Brandon Wild. And so new resident move-in is very vital to our sustainability. So we're just scratching our heads and wondering why university would want to aid in destroying their legacy. It's definitely worth keeping and protecting. The land is worth a lot of money to university and probably the developer too. But to us, it's priceless. An interesting thing came to light last week. We all got a letter from this company called Second Fifty Communities. And Mr. Mazingo signed the letter. He owns more development also that's going to develop this high-density thing. And in the letter, he says they're going to hold focus groups at the Augusta Country Club. And they want proactive and forward-thinking seniors who want to embrace life with a fulfilling retirement experience. And he quotes in the letter that he takes senior living personally because of an experience he had moving a family member into an adult community like this, senior living. And he's going to give that testimony during those focus groups. And the letter goes on to say that the best way to make sure that a company offers the highest level of design for residents is to ask them directly. He wants to know what people think is important so he can give older folks the things that they value the most, health, security, dignity, nice amenities, and again, and an enjoyable retirement living. So a concerted effort and concern for senior living and a desire to provide a fulfilling and enjoyable retirement living experience. We have that at Brandon Wild. We already have it. So why not make a concerted effort to not ruin ours with this high-density development that is not keeping with our beautiful area? Now, in closing, my great granny, who lives in the hills of mountains of Tennessee, she had a saying when things took a turn for the worse. "I sure wish things were just like they was before they got like they is." Well, my husband and I hope we won't ever have to say that in the future. But let's make a concerted effort to keep things like they is now so we don't have to sadly look back on how things was before a high-density development destroyed our serenity and peace of mind in our beautiful forest. So as a proactive and forward-thinking senior, I want to continue to embrace life at Brandon Wild in a fulfilling and enjoyable retirement community. So we're asking you, whenever they come back, with whatever they come back, please deny a high-density housing development. Thank you.
My name is Lynn Mays and I am a resident at Brandon Wild and I thank you for letting me speak. I'm afraid I might be a little repetitious, though, because Jacob and Jerry have adequately touched on all the points that I basically have. Fifteen years ago, my husband and I chose to live at Brandon Wild for the rest of our lives in an area of beauty, peace, and tranquility. We have been very content there these past few years and are quite, were quite concerned to learn of a proposed high-density development to be built adjacent to our beautiful campus. If approved, this high-density development with only one entrance/exit onto Owens Road would greatly increase an already growing traffic and safety problem on Owens Road. Just think of an addition of approximately 300 or more cars coming into that exit or entrance every day, plus school buses on that part of the road where I do not feel a light would help in any way. It would even make more congestion and make it more dangerous. We're also concerned about security issues. If 174 residents go into a tightly contained area like that, we feel it could raise many security issues. In building a high-density development such as being proposed, I assume the acreage would need to be clear-cut to make room for all of these houses. And we feel that that would incur a drainage and water issue from this property, which is sloped down toward our campus. We feel that this high-density development would be quite detrimental, not only to Brandon Wild, but to the Evans community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Commissioner Spears.
Very unusual for me to be on this side of the fence, but always exciting. Well, first of all, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to make these comments. Having experienced it, that seat that Commissioner Malier's sitting for many a year and sitting in this room and looking at the visions many times, thinking about what Evans could be and what we have today, it's nothing but excitement for me, truly excitement for me. Well, we did think of a plan called a Vision 2035. We did spend a long time and a lot of money, a lot of energy, to make that plan happen. And this is kind of where we're at today. I really appreciate the applicant's decision to withdraw the zoning application. While I personally am not happy to accept the fact they want to do it without prejudice, if I was sitting in that seat, I'd have a far different opinion. Your Planning and Zoning Commission has requested that it be denied. I don't want them to come back in a month. I want them to come back in six months so we can all sit down and have a conversation. If that is not my decision tonight, I don't get to vote. But it all goes back to the drawing board regardless. We don't need to rush to judgment. There's no question in my mind and everybody's mind in this room, something is going to go on that land. And that is the next question that we have to think about. What is going to happen in this community? Well, where do we go from here? If you agree tonight to allow them to withdraw, which I'm sure you will, I hope you don't allow them to withdraw without prejudice, but with prejudice and or just out deny it, there's no doubt this 39-acre parcel has a very high asking price. It's being offered for $68,000 an acre, which means that piece of land is worth $2,680,000. There's no way you're going to be able to build anything on that piece of property that is not highly packed dense to make those numbers work. It's just not going to happen. So either the University Hospital that owns the land will have to either adjust the price or I don't know what. I really don't know what. But I truly trust each and every single one of you that you're going to continue the direction that you've been following. And that direction is, you know, high-density, and the Evans Town Center is not something you are going to allow. There's plenty of high-density around us, apartments, different areas that can be met. But this particular parcel demands a little bit more attention. Well, I can close by saying this. I can assure you that the residents of Brandon Wild and the entire community around us really want to work with the developers, the planning commission, the board of commissioners. We all have the exact same goal. And that goal is to really continue the exceptional quality of life we have in Columbia County. But personally, I think to allow them to go without prejudice, need a long period of time to make sure that it's done right, it's done efficient, and it's done correctly. And I thank each and every one of you for what you do because I know you're missing dinner a whole lot of nights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as I shared when we were talking about the vote for the C2 zoning, you have to balance constitutional rights. And I know, I have a feeling if I took a poll in here, most of the folks in this room would be for the Constitution. Matter of fact, I doubt anybody would be against it. But we have to balance that because landowners do have rights. And the sad part for me is when we sit in meetings like this and folks say, "Well, when I bought in, they said X." Unfortunately... Unfortunately, then now they want to do Y. Well, X is not a legal contract to Y. You can't necessarily stop folks from developing their land or selling their land or as the, as the Constitution says, the right to profit from it. So, yeah, I expect someday that this will be developed. I don't know what. This plan did not meet expectations, which is why it's not going forward. Or at least that's the motion as long as everybody votes. But I would expect something to happen. I wouldn't say more sooner than later, but something eventually will happen on this property. Any other comments, questions? Those motions second on the floor, all in favor, signify by right hand? Motion carries? Y'all going to stay here? Watch us keep going? That's correct. They could come back tomorrow if they chose. But they're a long way, no, this, it starts all over, basically. So it's back to square one. What would the process, they, if they came back tomorrow, then what, how long we talking? Which is not, they're not coming back tomorrow, but.
Could be six weeks minimum before they were back in front of you. Minimum of six weeks. Got to go through a public advertisement period. They've got to go in front of the Planning Commission period. They've got to then get Planning Commission recommendation to you. Minimum of six weeks, probably closer to eight with the holidays.
End of January?
So eight.
If they did, so it's a long way from, and back at square one.
Reason for the withdrawal from then is they know that we don't want that density.
Right.
I believe they have heard.
They know we want something that's satisfactory.
Too much traffic. The message we delivered was too much traffic. Let's move on. Have that dinner that Mr. Spears spoke about.
Uh, next item, 12 B.C. 6, excuse me. File VA 2. Okay.
Don't have to leave.
Rest of it'll be good.
But we're hungry.
Mr. Jerry, it's good to see you. I used, I used to see you all the time years ago when I first started on planning and all. And I wondered where you, where you were. I thought you had moved away, so it's great to see you.
Yeah.
I'll let you know every time.
Still alive, still kicking.
You're looking good.
I appreciate y'all too.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and speak loudly.
Okay, uh, file VA 211101. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section 90-147A2 and I3 use provisions for property located at tax map 072A, parcels 335 and 190 to permit an existing drive-through to remain and an expansion of the drive through into adjacent property subject to the condition enumerated in the November 4, 2021 Planning Commission report.
Second.
The request before you is, is a variance to two parts of our code. The first part is having a drive-through in front of the building. This is the existing Taco Bell drive-throughs there. Second part of the variance they're asking for is a drive-through is considered a ancillary-type use, the primary use. They're looking to put their drive-through lane on an adjacent parcel. Since there is no use for a drive-through on that parcel, you're having to grant a variance to that parcel. So you're granting a variance to allow the drive-through to remain in front of the building and the drive-through to be on somebody else's property. And one of the conditions is they must show us they have the easement for the drive-through prior to doing it.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand? Right, I believe we're done. Vice Chairman Richardson?
Sir, I make a motion to award and approve the 2021 Lamig SAP striping and signage contract markings in the amount of $208,559.65 issued that project must be started within 30 calendar days from issuing.
Second?
This is LBIG funding, but it's not the LBIG funding you're used to seeing for resurfacing. This is a secondary grant that staff went out and got to do striping and signage. So we've done phase one earlier in the year. This is a phase two. We rejected bids earlier on to put some signs in it. Peak did come in low. The 30-day clause is due to the fact that if we don't start this project by December 31st, we lose that grant. So if they don't start by December 31st, they don't get to do the project. We don't get the project. That makes sense? We have reached out to Peak. They have told us they will start. The contract bid documents state that they have to start by the date that the county engineer specifies. So Mr. Titus clarified with them, they will start the project. Just start, don't have to finish. Just show up and start making some lines on the ground and, and we're good. We get that $200,000, roughly $200,000.
Motion is second on the floor, all in favor? Carries? Mr. Galius?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve amendment number three to the agreement with Gold Cross EMS for ambulance, emergency, and non-emergency medical services.
Second. This is a request from our ambulance provider, Gold Cross, to amend their contract to basically increase their, their per-ride fees. This gets them in line with all the other contracts they have. It also charges the fair market rate now. We have determined that what they're asking for is the fair market rate. We're also working with Gold Cross on some other contract issues, but this was something that was deemed important and needed to come before you tonight.
Questions? What was that last thing you just said? Getting the rates in order, but?
But we're also working with, with Gold Cross for, on their contract going forward.
For other things.
For other things, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
My, my.
No, I'm sorry, I was, I was multitasking.
And something to take notice of is that this does not increase the billing to our citizens, the third-party payers.
Well, I mean, it, it's the rate that is set out there for the insurance providers. Obviously, you have a deductible to meet, so I mean, it could, it could be the, the end user paying that, the citizen paying that. But most of the time, this is, this is going to be paid by the insurance companies.
Thank you, sir. Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand? Carries? Legal matters?
No, we already dealt with it.
Thank you. No review by committee? Any public comments anymore, public comments? Executive session, I believe we have, we have two items. Get with right hand?
I would like to read mine in, in public forum, if that's okay with you, Chairman?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to approve a 2% lump sum merit payment to be distributed to all the eligible employees prior to January 1st, 2022.
Second.
This is the annual merit that the commission discussed. This was not a budgeted item, but we did bring this item up. This would allow our, our employees to receive a lump sum merit payment. These, it'd be just for the employees that have met their probationary period or come off their probationary period, and also for employees that have ranked at least a three out of a one, one-to-five scale. They've ranked at least a three in their performance appraisal. Would receive this one-time 2% payment.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries? Chairman Richardson, you have one more.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to accept the donation of a permanent easement for parcel 061085A from MT Company.
Second.
This is a current, we have an easement in place already for this parcel, but it's for a slope easement only. We need to adjust a, a water, a fire hydrant back into that easement. To do so legally, we need to change it to a slope and utility easement. Just a legal document that the property owner has agreed to sign to allow us to move the water line, the water, the fire hydrant.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries? Seeing nothing else on the agenda, any more motions want to be made?
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adjourn.
Second. Raise your right hand. We're adjourned.